Good evening, everyone. I am Superintendent Matt Nelson. I am going to be calling tonight's meeting to order at 7:02. You may be wondering why I am calling the meeting to order. That is because our Chair, Mr. Jamison, is unavailable to attend tonight's meeting. He has a family commitment of dropping his daughter off at college this evening. And then also Vice Chair Jonathan Mapes is also unavailable tonight as he has getting ready for surgery and not able to attend the meeting. So the first thing that I would like to do after calling the meeting to order is take a recommendation by the school committee to nominate one of our members in attendance to chair this meeting this evening.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Kendra Williams to act as Chair for this meeting in the absence of school committee Chair and Vice Chair. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, Kendra, the meeting is now yours.
Okay, well, let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No adjustments this evening.
No minutes to approve? Just want to talk about public comments. There will be two kinds of public comments. We could have public comments right now for anything that's not part of the agenda tonight, just general public comments. I see a few people have signed up. Is there anyone that would like to do that? So not related to the return to school plan? Okay, so Michael Kleinrock?
Thank you for allowing me a question. Just a comment. You've asked about a comment other than what's on the agenda, but there's been no published agenda. So I'm, I guess we're talking about the school plan, but it's a little strange. I haven't been able to find anything online. It's been a fairly interesting process to adjust to how this is being run. And I hope there's a comment or an opportunity to comment or ask questions about the plan. Specifically, and I hope this isn't out of order, as you recognize me for non-school things, just to ask, there is a part of the plan that results in a vote that then leaves the superintendent as responsible for all decisions related to opening or re-closing or whatever for the rest of the school year. Seems to me as a resident that the school committee is a perfect body to provide oversight. And I wonder why that's not happening periodically throughout the year as part of the plan? And I just wanted to get that in. Thank you.
Thank you. And then was someone right here? Not related to the back-to-school plan, right? When you do get to the microphone, could you state your name?
Hi, Ed Cormier. Kids going to Margaret Chase. Question is, I know they sold the nice new sidewalks and the crosswalks there at Margaret Chase. I would assume that my kid's going to be a walker this fall. My question is the flashers, and this was a question that was brought up before the construction plan. Is there, is there still a plan or still a thought to move that flasher back to Burwick Road to be in accordance with the state distance guidelines for the entrance of schools, the slowdown of flashers? And we're like three weeks away and this flasher still hasn't moved.
Yes, there is a plan to adjust that. The flasher that's been ordered will not be here until mid-September. And so until it gets here, we're going to keep that as is. But once it's here, we will be making those adjustments.
Awesome.
And it also, codes are aware of that and it's gone through and passed all the necessary codes and occupancies.
So comments related to the return to school plan will be accepted after there's been presentations, an updated presentation by Mr. Nelson and also a presentation by Mrs. Lambert on the distance learning option for the K to four. So we, you know, before that happens, we'll kind of give some guidance to that. But was there anyone else that had a comment that not related to that? So any communications?
No, we've not received any communications, but I do want people in the audience as well as people at home watching via Zoom or on the stream or the public access channels that we have received a number of inquiries and comments and questions via the school info line. And I want people to know that those have been received and have all been forwarded to the school committee for them to be able to take that information that people have been able to send in.
Great. And then the next thing would be construction.
Following last Monday's meeting, I don't have an update on Sanford High School, Sanford Regional Technical Center, but I do have two updates on Margaret Chase Smith School as well as the Sanford Middle School. This past Saturday at Margaret Chase Smith School, a sprinkler system in Area B was being refilled after completing some work to the stage sprinkler system. And while the sprinkler system was filling up, a leak occurred at Stair B on the second floor. It appears that a sprinkler head was damaged and when the system was re-pressurized, the sprinkler head came off and water proceeded to spill out of the opening. All water was mopped up on Saturday. There's damage to numerous ceiling tiles in Stair B, Corridor 230 and Corridor 130. Currently, our contractor is moving all the damaged ceiling tile and reviewing the drywall to check for moisture. I was made aware of this this morning. It appears that water infiltrated the fire alarm panel in the main electrical room and the fire alarm panel appears to be a total loss. And currently, there's no active fire alarm in the building. We have noted, notified our subcontractor, Griffin Electric, and they have a fire alarm tech scheduled to be on-site tomorrow to assess the damage and also come up with a resolution for that. We also have been in contact, contact with our Fire Marshal. And the Fire Marshal, though he's very happy with the progress of the project, due to the fire alarm and the water damage, he has canceled the temporary certificate for occupancy for Margaret Chase Smith School effective at 4:00 PM today for that. So the following items must be checked and tested before a new temporary CFO is given. The alarm must have a new panel installed and have it tested with the Sanford Fire Marshal. All lighting, electric, electrified signage and any wiring that got wet or may have gotten wet must be replaced. And all electrical panels in the electrical room must be inspected inside by the Sanford Electrical Inspector to make sure they did not get wet. I did have a conversation with the Fire Marshal today in the, this afternoon, and both he and the Code Department have assured me that they're going to do everything they can to get this, these inspections done quickly to be able to get the school back online with that. So that impact, I'll be sharing that impact and my recommendation on how that impacts the school reopening plan later on. In regards to the converted middle school project, Area A in the building, which includes the kitchen, that has not been punched out yet, but it is moving along well. I was over there early this morning on-site. Kitchen is expected to be completed by end of this week and the architect's planning to punch the space the following week, early next week. It was reported that the dishwashing tables that surround the dishwasher will come in near the middle of September. Although inconvenient, it should not hold up the operation of the dishwashing window. Temp tables may need to be set up to accommodate the receipt of any dishes. Remaining equipment startup is, in the kitchen, is set for this Wednesday. And we've reached out for a training session with our kitchen staff to occur as soon as possible, and they're in the process of setting that up with the vendor. The classroom wings, Areas B and D, first and second floor, have been both punched out and they're available for owner furniture and equipment as the contractors finalizing punch list items. We have moved all of the eighth grade materials into Area D and we began moving today other areas from the junior high over into B and D. And the plan is to have all of those items moved and finalized hopefully by the end of the week. Area C, which is the gym area, that is ready. It's being utilized for some storage at this time. The locker rooms were not ready to be punched when our architect was there last Friday, but the expectation is they'll be ready to be punched out by the end of the week. We have also gone ahead and scheduled the gym floor treatment for that to take place in time before school starts. Area E, the classrooms and the portion of Area E that are down the main corridor coming from the main entrance, they were punched last Friday and there's minimal items for the contractor to address. These rooms do appear ready for us to begin furnishing. The remainder of Area E has spoke that needs to be finished. The expectation is will be ready to be punched out at the end of this week. This area is certainly probably the area with the most amount of work to do. Area F, although not punched out, the space is looked in relatively decent shape. The rooms were used for contractor storage, which makes them feel less ready, but once the spaces are cleaned up, they'll be ready to be punched. We're hoping this will be done by the end of this week. As far as the site itself, paving work is expected this week. They were held up by an error in installing water to the sprinkler room. They did not follow proper protocols when they installed it a year ago. And so they had to redo that installation to meet the water department's required equipment and disinfection protocols. And right now, it looks like the site will be near completion by the end of the week. The exterior building facade, the metal panel siding is going in now. Several doors have yet to be finalized and are expected to be closed in this week when the Mason returns to the site this week. So this was, we were shooting for to be able to have temporary occupancy today on August 17th. Obviously, we don't have that. This Thursday is a big day for the project because that's when they'll have all the fire alarm and sprinkler tests to take place. Those will be integral for us to be able to move ahead, to be able to get a certificate of occupancy. In the event that that doesn't happen, when we have school scheduled for our staff to come back on Wednesday, August 26th, the contractors told us that they will be paying for a fire watch, which in essence will satisfy the Fire Marshal. The Fire Marshal is okay with that as a backup plan in the event that things, the certificate of occupancy is not granted. Obviously, not great news in terms of both the reopening of school, but also the impact on our reopening plan. And so later on, when we get to that on the agenda, I will be recommending that our start of school for K through eight, based on all the moving and the arts of that, would be moved back from a start date of September 8th to move that back to Monday, September 14th in light of everything that has gone on. Any questions on any of the construction updates?
And I think other committee reports. Emily, did you have anything on performing arts?
I do not at this time.
And WSSR, we have a meeting Wednesday for that. Directors' reports, there are none? Is that correct? So new business, temporary substitute pays, pay rates.
Yeah, so obviously, one of the things that is really important to us every year when it comes down to this, and this is usually an item that we have, is where we look at setting the substitute rates. And this year, that becomes a little bit more challenging in light of COVID-19. And so we've worked at trying to strike a balance between, we do have the budgeted, we do have funds in addition to what we have budgeted funds, but we also have coronavirus relief funds as well as the CARES Act funds to be able to be utilized for us, for substitutes in light of COVID-19. So in light of that, we are looking at increasing our substitute rates. One thing that we are being careful with is knowing that eventually the CARES and CRF funds are going to be going away and we're going to be going back to what we had. We have to strike a balance in times in terms of what an increase may be for that. We also did a deep dive into our substitute usage last year and looking at trying to be able to find out what those would be. And so we would like to have, recommend that those substitute rates be, for anybody who does have a, is retired or a certified teacher, that would be $120 a day. And then if we had anybody else who's a classroom substitute, that would be people with four-year degrees or below, that would be $100 a day is what we're recommending. We've got a posting that is ready to go out. We wanted to wait until the school committee took action this evening so that we can get that posting out to be able to recruit substitute teachers. We also have plans in place. We have almost 30 substitute, we've reached out to all of our substitutes about their intentions to return. And we have about, almost 30 who have said that they are interested in returning. And so we will be scheduling a training for them right off the bat to be able to make sure before they come back that they are up to date in terms of all the new and safety protocols that will be in place. And it's our goal to be able to have access to them immediately to be able to come back in for that. And then we also will have the posting out to recruit any other new subs so that we can have an orientation set up to be able to come back. And it's an orientation slash training so that we can be able to go through the interviews, the paperwork, the reference checks and the background checks to make sure that that all works so that that will help us before school begins. I do want to point out that these are, these substitute rates are for those substitutes who are not in a long-term situation. This may be a situation where I may be in a short-term substitute situation. In those situations where we do have someone that is in a long-term, then the pay rate is different. That is connected more into the teaching scale on a per diem basis, and obviously, that is much more. But that is the recommendation before you this evening so that we can be able to continue to publicize.
Matt, a quick question for you. What are the current pay rates right now?
Right now, it's $80, $85 for a four-year degree, $90 for a teaching degree and $80 for anything less than a bachelor's degree.
Okay.
So it's our plan to move those up to $100 and $120. We did be able to look at our substitutes and we are well represented in all of those categories. We do have a number of people who do not have a, do not have a teaching degree or a retired teacher that do still come and help us. And so that was something that we wanted to, as we've done our research and review on that, to be able to see.
Okay, thank you.
So could we have a motion on that?
Motion to approve.
Okay, all in favor? So now we've reached the part of the meeting for the return to school plans. And I just want to reiterate that after, I know Mr. Nelson is going to give an update on the plan and also Mrs. Lambert is going to present the distance learning plan for the K to four. So after that, before the school committee considers the plans, we will take public comments. But I do want to say in advance that there may be a lot of people that want to make public comment. If you could keep your public comment to like between one and two minutes at the most, that would be really helpful so we can move along. If you have someone else has made the same comment or asked the same question, then maybe you could let it go for that. The other thing is, again, I want to reiterate what Mr. Nelson said at the beginning. He's been forwarding this, the comments that people sent in to the email address. So we have all had a chance to read those and consider those comments as well.
Kendra, will we be receiving Zoom comments also?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so thank you, Kendra. In terms, first thing that I want to do as we talk about the reopening plan is I want to send a thank you out to our community, to our families. I appreciate everybody's reaching out in terms of their viewpoints. Almost everybody has been very, very understanding, very appreciative of the challenge that's ahead of us. And that, I really appreciate that because I do think that people realize that the issue in front of us is incredibly challenging for that. So that's what I wanted to start with because I think that as people are doing what they feel, we're in a, in a situation where we've never been before. Typically, when we start to get to this time of August, you will start to see, business will start to pick up in terms of phone calls and in terms of questions. And that's just on a normal reopening. That anxiety is there. It's there for our families. It's there for our students and it's there for our faculty, staff and our teachers. And so when you have that anxiety and you combine that also with COVID-19 and you combine that with the construction that I talked about where many of our staff are going to be going into new buildings, new classrooms, you can feel how much of a challenge and where that is with everybody. Because at the end of the day, and people understand this, this is really hard. We're going in to do something. We open up school all the time, but we've never done it this way before. And I think people understand that there is no perfect plan that's out there to reopen in terms of how it's going to be different. There's not a one-size-fits-all strategy in terms of what we're doing. And that's hard because I know that the approach that I take, as well as I would say, members of the school committee, we are doing our best always to try to meet people where they're at, to work with people and to do our best to be able to accommodate when we can. And in these situations, that becomes very challenging and very difficult for them. This week, I had an opportunity to go out and on Zoom meetings with all of the various levels, with the faculty and staff, to do my best to answer their questions as well. And there's a lot of, a lot of questions. As I was telling people that learning is going to be different for everyone and it's going to be something where there is going to be incredible disruption. And those are some things that we just can't ignore. One of the approaches that we've taken when we did send out our surveys to our communities at the end of school last year, June, it was resounding that if you looked at it, that the people wanted our kids and their kids back in school. And I think we all do, if possible, because that's something where we understand that if we are going to continue to keep schools closed, those are going to come with some, some big impacts, whether that's individually or if that's even collectively or in a, in a long term with that. We know that many kids cannot effectively learn, engage, be active, eat healthy, socialize until really schools are able to reopen. So that's been our task as we've come forward to put a reopening plan there, but the key for us to do that is safety. And I've talked about this before and I want our families to know, at the end of the day, these are choices that we realize that our families have to make in the best interest of their children. We realize these are also decisions that our staff also have to make that are in the best, in their best interest with them. I've been upfront that at the end of the day, a lot of what we're doing is really a risk reduction, reductions strategy on doing what we can to reduce the transmission. As I've been telling, been saying, there is no such thing as zero risk in anything that we do in a school department, let alone and certainly not during a pandemic. But one of the things that we're doing is following the guidance of the Maine Department of Education and CDC. And that indicates that the risks to students and staff can be kept low if we adhere to strict control measures and we're able to respond to potential outbreaks for them. And so you'll see a reopening plan that is really talking about strategies that are a multi-layered plan for us to reduce exposure and limit transmission to the best that we can. Part of that is really emphasizing, establishing, emphasizing, reinforcing our culture of health and safety and shared responsibility for that. And so those are some of the guiding principles that have been guiding us in terms of where this plan. Last week, when we did have the presentation in the school committee, obviously, there's still areas that people want some more information. Some of those areas really, two of the ones that I felt really rose up were the, what the distance learning plan would be for our K through fourth grade students. There was questions along that in terms of people being able to have and evaluate their options. So what we'd like to do this evening is to help with that with more information. We're going to have our Director of Curriculum, Bethany Lambert, talk more about that. And then the other piece was also the idea around fifth and sixth grade, especially if there's any ways that we could look at, if there are ways that rather than have them be on a hybrid model of two days of in-person instruction, if there is ways that we could increase that. And so I've got some updated information around that that I will share with the committee as well. So if it's okay, I think we'd start now. Bethany, if you want to come up and give your presentation on the K through four.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. So trying to identify what the best remote option was going to be for our K to fours and something we've been working on for several weeks. We looked through several different platforms, some that have been around for quite a while, which is the one I'm going to show you tonight, some that are brand new. And I think some people have, have seen the posting from the Maine DOE. They have their own loose online curriculum, which I believe Mr. Nelson will talk about a little later and explain to you why we would choose that particular platform. So the one that we ended up deciding on is called Calvert Learning. And it has actually, Calvert Learning has been around for 112 years. They are proud to be able to offer non-traditional settings and experiences to students. It's a curriculum that's known for its academic excellence. And if you look, it's in, it has helped over 600,000 students in 90 countries with tens of thousands right here in the U.S. that will be using it this year as well. So what does Calvert Learning do? It is a platform that helps the parents, who they refer to as learning guides, help their students through the curriculum. And they do that with very, very thoughtful, very easy to follow guidelines. One of the first ones is a time for structured learning by age. We all know that we don't want little ones in front of computer screens for an entire day, nor do we want our teenagers as well. But they go ahead and show you that you should not have your three to five-year-old on the computer for more than 15 minutes, 15 to 20 minutes at a time before they need a break. And they also talk about, there should And they also talk about there should only be one to two hours of learning time a day for an elementary student. I'm sorry. Excuse me. So, and you're thinking, okay, only one to two hours of learning time. Well, that's what's in front of the computer screen, but there's also, what are you pointing? I'm sorry. There's also other activities and learning that's taking place off the screen. There's performance activities and things like that that the kids are doing without being in front of a computer screen. They also remind the learning guides that motor breaks are important. You have to get up and get and move around for 10 minutes or so. You have to get those big muscles working so that you can get your brain to focus and settle and get a little bit of learning done. For our students who decide to do remote learning, that might be part of Title I. We also have two other programs called Edge Annuity and Lexia that they will also be working with. And our Title I students that will not be working remotely will also be working with these programs as well. This will help them fill in those gaps that they might need. And if you have a student who's in special education, you'll have to set up an IEP meeting so that all of the needs that the student has can be met. So a little deeper into Calvert Learning. So it does take attendance. And that will be a way for our staff member who will be working with the students and monitoring them to be able to update attendance into Infinite Campus for our report cards. And the way they take attendance is, Calvert Learning says that for every major or core class, so that would be English, Science, Math, Social Studies, they should be doing one lesson a day. And then the specials, once a week. It grades on a 0 to 100 scale, and that would then be transpired also into a regular report card at Infinite Campus for grading. When you become a learning guide, they not only have a very clear step-by-step brochure, but they also have training dates and times, multiple times during the week for both students and parents, so that they understand each of their roles and what it might look like for them. So as I stated before, they offer the four core classes. For electives, you can choose two, and the ones they offer are Health, Physical Education, and Art. So what does the platform look like? This is what your student would see in the upper right-hand corner. At the beginning of every week, they get their lessons for the entire week for each of their courses. And the student clicks on them. They can work ahead if they need to. And you'll see the graph at the bottom. If the bar is green, that means the student is ahead of pace. If it's gray, that means they're right on pace and doing exactly what they need to do each day. If it does turn red, it means they're a day or two behind, and they might need to check and readjust their work schedule. So it's very user-friendly. You're able to look at it and know exactly where your child is for each of their different classes. So what is the parent guardian role in learning? So the program works in several different ways. This is an example from, I believe it's a grade one English class. The program, up in the right-hand corner, it will read the lesson to the student if you want it to. Or the parent guardian or learning guide, as they like to refer to them, can sit down and read it with the student. But there is many opportunities where the parent actually has to sit and work with the students. I don't want people to think that this is a computer program that you sit your child in front of and it teaches them for you. The program houses the learning, and it's the parent and learning guide that helps the students get through the lessons, learning the skills, and the knowledge. A couple of other little breakdowns. They talk about characters and books. It shows you, this is, I believe, from a first grade where they're learning phonics. The learning in this program is spiral. And what that means is the student will work on the concepts and skills more than once so that it builds their confidence and they're able to retain it. And social emotional learning is also integrated in the lessons as well, which is very important to our district. So we felt that that fit really well too. So other than the Calvert Learning program, they have also partnered up with several of these interactive programs. Discovery Education Streaming, Brain Pop, Gizmos, MyMath, and Legends of Learning Science Games. Brain Pop and Gizmos are actually a program that we use here in the district this year. So once the students have learned, have started learning the common, the knowledge and the skills, these interactive ways are ways for them to practice those skills in a fun way, something a little more interactive. And I wanted to give graphics so that you can see that they are very age-appropriate and what they look like. So after this, maybe you're thinking to yourself, so our family, we've decided remote learning is best. Now what? What's my next step if that's what we want to do? First, what you need to do is fill out the commitment form that was emailed to you on Thursday or texted to you. You need to choose the option that lets the school department know your student will be remote learning. A school department staff member will reach out to your family with information, links to the website, login information, and training schedules. And once your student receives their school-issued technology, they can begin learning. So once you begin your role as a learning guide, what does that mean for you as a parent? You need to support your student in engaging in lessons daily at a time that works for the family. So if you're someone that works during the day and your child may be with another family or with a grandparent, and you don't want them to have to sit and work with them, you can work out, you can work with them at night when you get home. So you're not stuck to the schedule of a regular school day. One completed lesson per core class daily is what's expected. And as I said before, electives, as identified usually once a week. With the help of the teacher's manual, you need to assist with clarification of new concepts and skills as needed by the student, as well as discussions about new learning. Committing to a full trimester of remote learning and connect with the supporting staff weekly for monitoring and support. So what is the school, Sanford School Department staff with grade writing assignments, monitor progress of remote learning students weekly, and will provide tech support as needed if the school-issued technology does not function properly. And if at any time that you have an issue with the actual program, they have a 24-hour email and phone that you can reach out to and ask for assistance through Calvert Learning. And that's it.
And so thank you, Bethany. Nice job. Couple things. One, as we were looking at this, the challenge in front of us was that I think the feedback that we received last spring was around the distance learning. I think under the circumstances, especially what we had to put together last spring for that, I think all in all, I think people were pleased. But I also think that people also realized that it needed to also be more. For us, the challenge that we've had is, is we are planning to bring back all of our K through four students that do want to return. They'll be back to school every day. And so with that, you're going to have our teachers who are going to be responsible for providing learning. We also have a lot of safety protocols and things that are in place that are also new. And so with that, you'll probably notice that through there, it was not noted that a specific teacher would be part of the K through four plan. And that was by design because we don't want to commit to something at this time that we're not sure that we're going to be able to follow through. And I know that's not popular with people, but at the end of the day, we were not going to be able to have both our teachers, K through four, would be responsible for the in-person learning as well as the distance learning. You heard Beth talk about the platform and the things that are used with that. It's also not asynchronous, which means it has to be done at the same time of the school day for that. We also thought that that would also be an advantage for some families and some parents to be able to help and become. You hear the word MOOSE curriculum. That is an online platform that the Maine Department of Education is providing. It looks exciting. It looks like something that has potential. I know we're interested in learning more about that. That may be an option for our families. But it is something that hasn't been released yet. It's scheduled to be released September 7th. And so that was something that at the time, we're not comfortable because of not being familiar with it or knowing with it, what it's going to be exactly and specifically. Makes that something that for us, we were not comfortable at the time committing to MOOSE. One of the things you notice with Calvert Learning, it is K through four, but it is a K through 12 curriculum. And one of the things that we can also offer is beyond grades K through four. If that was something that our middle school families, grades five through eight, if they were not comfortable with their students coming back, and they also were not comfortable with the plan as far as having people full-distance learning who are doing synchronous as in-time learning by zooming in with their teachers at that time, that could also be another option to be able to work for families, five through eight. We did not, we're not looking at it to go grades nine through 12 because that runs into some challenges in terms of credits. When we get to credits in high school, those come back to be able to look for graduation. So that was something in terms of looking at that expanding for them. I know it's difficult because this is something that is going to be a responsibility to parents, and it doesn't have any guarantee. There'll be staff involvement in terms of monitoring the progress, but in terms of being able to come back and be able to guarantee that people will be able, that our teachers will be able to come back, we're stopping short of it. And that is understandable because it's a worry that we have from a capacity standpoint for all of our teachers, our K through four teachers who are going to be working with children every day, Monday through Friday. So I have other information in terms around updating the plan. Would it be good to go through that stuff? And then before we be able to look into other questions?
I would be comfortable hearing it all.
Okay, Kendra. All right, so I will, one of the other challenges that came up that was a takeaway from last Monday's meeting was, hey, we understand that K through four is coming back every day, but we also know that five through 12 will be an A group and a B group, and they'll be coming in-person learning two days a week, either Monday or Thursday, or Tuesday and Friday. And when they're not in-person learning, they will be, on those days, they'll be following through on Google Classroom and Google Meets. And then Wednesday would be a full remote day. Well, one of the things we heard, and we understand that there is concern from the community, especially those around fifth and sixth grade parents because of the age group, that that would be challenging for them to be in-person two days, but also remote for three. And so we understood that from the beginning in terms of understanding what our challenges were. We went back to look at that because for us, it really comes down to a space issue primarily. If you look at our enrollments for grades five and grade six, you'll look at Sanford Middle School with four grades, Sanford High School with four grades. The middle school has over 100 students more. And so if you look in fifth and sixth grade, we have 10 teachers assigned to both of those grades. And the average class size there is 25. That's where we're starting with 25. And then if you look at people who choose the full remote option, and right now, all of our surveys are, we're expecting that to land somewhere between 10 and 20%. And if you're able to do that, we're now not able to get the physical distancing distances that we need. Remember, we're shooting for six feet. The minimum is three feet. And so the class sizes there are not in a situation for grades five and six. We are also moving into a new building as well. So it's also adding on to that challenge in terms of what we've looked at. So that's why in terms of having five, six continue on an A, B as part of the five through 12, that is primarily the main reason that we have done that is right now, space. Our hope is, as we get into this and things go well, we'll see if there are ways for us to increase that possibly for it. That's obviously the goal. We also have a plan that in the event that things, we have to respond, and if we have some data to respond to that is not good in terms of being able to do that, we also want to be able to pivot for that. So that is primarily, as you look at the square footage, you can look at the size of the rooms, where they are to come back. We wouldn't be able to come back and be able to fit that comfortably. We are, as we look at the, we did send a survey out. Stop. It's not a survey. We've been surveyed to depth. It's an intentions form because we're at a point now where we need families to let us know what their intentions are. We sent that out last Thursday. We asked for that to come back on Wednesday. This week, because we did realize that there were a number of families that were still waiting to make their decision. They wanted to have all their information. They wanted to have more information about the K through four fully remote plan. And so we're having those back on Wednesday. We feel comfortable. A number of people have already returned their responses. We're right now looking at it where at the elementary level, it is somewhere between 80% of the people want to come back to in-person learning, 20% want to do full distance. When we kind of look at those numbers in the spaces, we are confident and comfortable that we're going to be able to meet the guidelines that are in place around physical distancing. Now, is that going to be easy? Is it still going to be hard? Is it going to be challenging? Yes, with that. So that's where we are. The other thing that I wanted to also talk about with our plan was you'll notice, if you look through, we did our best to kind of send that plan out through as a news item through our app to release that so people would be able to check on it. If you went through that, you will see that there's a plan, but there's also in areas of the plan that have been changed or updated. We have also kind of put it parentheses to say updated, and the date that was updated. Because as people know, information is changing. We are meeting as superintendents. We are meeting weekly. In some situations, we're meeting daily as the information becomes available. If you remember, last Friday, the state of Maine did release their county designation. And with those county designations, they once again had all of the counties in Maine issued as green. That's good news. That also doesn't mean that that means everyone can come back to school. That means they can as long as people are meeting the guidelines, the expectations that are in place. So one thing that we've done is we go through with our plan. And if there are things there that are updated or changing, because there is information that's coming. There are some situations where there are questions that we're waiting for for answers, for example. So we go through with the, with that. I just want to highlight that some of the changes in the plan that you see that were not there in terms of the one that was released a week ago. There is some updated information around health screenings. We really want to emphasize once again that our families keep children home if they're sick or have had close contact with a person diagnosed or suspected of having COVID-19. And as part of this plan, students, parents, caregivers, staff members must conduct a self-check for symptoms of COVID-19 before they enter a school building or before they board a school bus each day. There is also some information in there around physical distancing. We want to be able to evaluate classroom capacity on a case-by-case basis, based on the maximum capacity, based on the health guidelines, as we try to maximize that. I did mention that you shoot for six feet. The minimum is three feet. There was some more updated information around the mask and the face coverings. And one of the things that they said in this last update is that face shields may be an alternative for students with medical, behavioral, or other challenges who are unable to wear a mask or a face covering. This also applies to staff with medical or other health reasons who are unable to wear masks or face coverings. If face shields are worn in place of a mask, face covering, it must extend below the chin and back to the ears. That was an update that came out last week as well. One of the things that also that comes out in terms of a change in the plan, it's not on the plan because we have not had a chance to update it. This was information that came in terms of around the construction in the report that I talked about earlier. I talked about earlier in the meetings, that we were looking at start dates, and there's a concern right now that the Sanford Middle School, I mentioned, and now Margaret J. Smith School, with the fire alarm having to be replaced, the fire alarm system, and losing its occupancy. It is my recommendation, superintendent, that we take the K through four, I'm sorry, K through eight, kindergarten, pre-K through grades eight, and move their start date from Monday, Tuesday, September 8th, we move that back to Monday, September 14th, and for grades, pre-K through grade eight. We would still have Sanford High School, we'd still have Sanford Regional Technical Center, follow the plan that we had in place for Tuesday, September 8th. This extra time, this also comes from, as I said, we've had ongoing meetings, I did were able to meet with staff last week, talking with our administrators. I talked about how that anxiety is high when you start talking about new buildings, things to come in for our procedures to be able to do that. What we'd be looking to do for grades pre-K through eight is we would still want them to come and pick up their technology. These would be those people who are doing in-person learning, but all those who are also those doing full remote. We would have those students come in, the week of September 8th, there'd be a schedule set up for people to pick up their technology. The other thing that we would be doing is during that week of September 8th, pre-K through grade eight, we'd be sending out information around a open house, a virtual open house. We'd be sending out other things for people to do around some of the videos that would be taking place to help people ready to get prepared for school, for return to school. So around student, staff, and we would still follow a, for example, on Monday, September 14th, we would not have all of our students come back at that time. We would be looking at some staggered starts with the grades so that we can be able to come back and reintegrate our people back into school for that. So that's a big change. That is not on that, as I said, that came based on where we were on our construction report for those areas. And then there are also some other changes to the plan added since last week. These were updated last Friday, and those are around the courses requiring additional safety considerations. The DOE did release more guidance around chorus and singing instruction. They also had updated information around band and the use of musical instruments, also visual arts, and also physical education. And those are things that we put in the plan. If it's, if the committee wants me to, I can read into the specifics around that. They are a little bit lengthy, but I can also knock if that's the will of the committee.
Could you just give us an synopsis of what they have?
Sure. So chorus and singing instruction with that, they're basically saying if it's outdoors with masks encouraged, these activities can occur with at least 14 feet of distance between individuals. And they're at this time saying that those, these activities of chorus and singing would not take place indoors. That's because singing and voice projection carry a relatively higher risk of the virus transmission because it can aerosolize respiratory droplets for them. Also, around singing and chorus, all students should face in one direction instead of facing one another or coming in in a semicircle format. Around band and the use of musical instruments, instruction for musical instruments that require air blowing, so those would be flute, clarinet, trumpet, saxophone, trombone, they can only occur outdoors when individuals are at least 14 feet apart. These instruments should never be shared. Also, instruction for musical instruments that does not involve air blowing, these would be your strings, percussion, piano, those may continue indoors or outdoors as long as the health and safety requirements are met. And then obviously, there's cleaning protocols around the instruments. The visualize arts, those courses and activities, we realize that many of those involve the sharing of specialized equipment. And so the guidelines there are to minimize the use of shared equipment as much as possible. If the equipment must be shared, follow the guidelines that we have in our plan around shared objects. For that, it's also been encouraged to add disposable protective covers to shared cameras and any other equipment that requires close eye or mouth contact. And then around physical education for that, there are guidance around that. They say that physical education classes must not include activities with close physical contact. They should prioritize activities that do not require shared equipment. If shared equipment is used, it needs to be clean and disinfected between uses. Need to prioritize outdoor activities whenever possible. Students must wash or sanitize hands both before and after masks are removed and put on. No sharing of water bottles or towels or mouth guards, for example. If feasible, communal areas, including the locker rooms, we want to close those. If that, if not, we want to stagger those assignments. Students may be encouraged to wear comfortable and safe footwear that allows them to be able to move so they don't have to use a locker room. And then it's, these are some of the big ones. These are the precautions for physical activities. If outdoors without masks, these activities can occur within 14 feet of distance between individuals. If it's outdoor with masks, the activities can occur with six feet of distance. And if it's indoors with masks, then masks are required and they can occur with six feet of distance. So those are some of the updates. I highlight that because as we go through this process, there's going to be continued updates. If we learn information, it comes back, and that's going to be something that we need to be able to do to be able to come back and adjust our plan accordingly.
So I think this would be a good time to start taking public comment. And I know some people are participating through Zoom, and some people have signed up here in person, so maybe we can alternate. I know there's a few that haven't spoken in person, so what about Patrice Cuisinot?
Thank you for letting me speak. I'm a little nervous, so if I talk too fast, just tell me to slow down. First, I just want to thank you. What you're doing is incredibly hard, and we all see that, even if we're frustrated. So I do appreciate everything you're trying to do because there is no perfect solution that's going to work for everyone. So I just wanted to thank you because I think there isn't really anyone who wants to be sitting in your chair right now, because whatever you decide, there will be somebody upset. So that's all, I just wanted to thank you. To the schedulers who are trying to figure out how they're going to move kids around the high school building, thank you, I'm glad I don't have your job. To the special ed teachers who are trying to figure out how they will give close hands-on support to the kids who need it, thank you. So having said all of that, it's time to make a decision. Some people have COVID privilege where they can stay home. Lots of us don't. So it's time to make a decision. If you don't have any intention of going to green because you can't meet the guidelines, say that. Say that you're going to be in yellow all year. So those of us that want a five-day program will have some time to explore other programs. If you have a benchmark that you have to meet to go from yellow to green, tell us what that is so that we can just kind of look for that. I know you're possibly going to be like reevaluating every two weeks as things happen, and nobody wants anything bad to happen, but I know you're going to be really evaluating that. To the people who are trying to figure out how we can use tents and whether we can and whether we can't, please be solution-driven. Please try to figure out how it can work rather than make a laundry list of why it can't, because our kids need to get back together. We can talk about depression rates and anxiety rates and all those things, but we know that children, the purpose of school is to socialize and learn together. So anything you can do to make that happen is really, really appreciated. I know other people want to speak, so I'm not going to talk anymore except to throw a couple of big questions at you. You said 14 feet outdoors, does that mean no sports? That's one question. Will you provide transportation both ways? I know we're going to try to transport one way, but work schedules don't work out like that. So if there's no singing and performing, what will this wonderful space be used for? It looks like a great lecture hall to put a whole bunch of kids in. Are we thinking creatively about those common areas and how to fit more people in? So some kids are going to get to go to school four days, and some are only going to get to go to school two. With respect, my son has already taught me how to split screen during his Zoom meeting at work, where my boss thought I was completely paying attention and I was multitasking. I suspect teenagers will do the same. So two days a week in school and three days a week sitting at home by yourself at the dining room table is not really the best learning environment. So anything you can do to get to green, I would really appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So do we have someone from that Zoom that wants to comment?
No one at this time.
Okay. Then why don't we go then to Cara, is it Cara Held?
Hello, I'm Dr. Cara Held. I am a biosafety specialist and a mother of two in the school system. And of course, thank you for all your difficult decisions and your effort on making this happen for everyone. My personal opinion, of course, as a biosafety specialist, is that it is not time to go to school. It is not safe yet, and it will get worse. And we know that school is going to have to shut down at some point. We can see all the other schools doing the same. But putting that aside, and the fact that all of these safety precautions that we put in to our plans are compliant-based, meaning all of the teachers and the students need to be fully compliant for them to work, that is asking a lot of our community. We also have to have readily available sanitizing and cleaning stations in every corridor, hallway, classroom, and I don't think we have those resources yet. We need to make sure that we have a full year's worth of resources because this is not going away in December like everybody would love it to. It's going to be for a full year. And so of course, all of that into consideration. My personal choice is I would like to keep my kids home and remote. However, I have two points that are kind of converting and can kind of help each other here. So the first is, are the teachers being given the same choice that they can have in-person teaching or remote teaching? Because they have their own personal families, their own health issues, and they should not have to risk their lives and their health for the sake of their careers. If they choose to have to stay home for their own health reasons, are they going to have a career afterwards? Can they come back to the classroom, or are they going to lose that? The second point would be this remote option that was just presented today for the K through four students. If we look at the remote options between the K through four and the five through 12, those are not equitable. Five through 12 is having, wait, not really in-person, but a teacher talking to them, interaction with their classmates, everything that our kids need from school. As you said before, they need the social aspect of it. The remote kids would at least get a taste of that, even if they can't physically be there. This Calvert learning program takes all of that away. All the kids would be completely isolated, they will be on their own, the learning guides as the parents. That's just a homeschool program. That is not a public school program anymore. Now, if we put those two points together, we could take some of those teachers that need to stay home, perhaps they can be the teachers for the remote kids. As Mr. Nelson said, there is a 10 to 20% of the students that are opting for remote, that's about one to two students, one to two teachers per grade. Those teachers could be in charge of the remote learning programs. And that way, students who are remote would get some sort of interaction with the teacher, even if it's not a daily lesson, at least a morning meeting, a check-in, and have some sort of a class together where they could meet other students and interact with other students, and make this a lot less difficult. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much, and good luck with your choice.
Thank you. Steve, is there anyone in remote on Zoom?
Yeah, we have Jessica Rice, who would like to speak.
Hi, everyone. So I just had a quick question about the online distance learning. As I was reviewing the slideshow that Beth went over earlier today, I noticed that Calvert only offers the four core classes and two electives. Under the homeschooling guidelines for the state, we're required as parents to not only teach the four core classes, but also we have to incorporate library skills, fine arts, gym, or PE, and there was one more, computer skills, there's like one more. So I'm curious as to if that program actually fits the requirements for the state of Maine based on just like what you would do for, because it does sound like a homeschooling, basically a homeschooling option that you guys would just be keeping grades and attendance records for. So I appreciate it. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. I'm going to go back to the people in the room because I know we had a few speak for the general public comment, but I promise you can get that opportunity after presentation. So if we want to go back to Michael Kleinrock?
Okay, so I'll avoid doing this because I can see lots of shorter people, so I won't do it. Thank you for taking the question. I had a couple of comments, I'm somewhat overlapping with some of the things that Cara said very eloquently, so I'll just start on one comment, which is that you're basing your color scheme on a state public reporting system that doesn't report total tests at a county or zip code level, and therefore we have zero idea if there are any cases circulating in San Antonio, zero. So when you fail to be compliant, because they're kids, they're going to lick their hands and chase each other and say, I got the COVID. I mean, we're going to have some positive thing, I'm sure they're going to be bought into it, I know they are. But that's a real challenge, and so you're looking at a situation where you have essentially no confidence in the data you're making your decision on. That's really challenging. So safety is, as you said, paramount, and yet you're flying blind. Related to that, there's no requirement in your lovely document for testing. So if someone has symptoms and is sent home, they don't have to get a test. That's fine, maybe people don't have the money for it, maybe it's expensive, they just stay home for two weeks. But the state will never know if they were positive, and you'll never know. You just sent them home. So what does that mean? That means we have no way for your system to work because you won't know if anyone was positive, ever, unless somebody spends the money to get tested. Now, in a community like this with people having trouble with their jobs and the stimulus checks not showing up, I wonder if people can afford those tests. And if they're voluntary, maybe they won't take them. So I just wonder how you're going to know until it's too late. So that's your safety point. I'm a parent of someone who's going to be in first grade and in eighth grade, so I have the same questions. Essentially, this is homeschooling, but you get funding if we choose it? If we choose homeschooling, you don't? That's what you're saying? I'm really curious why you didn't choose synchronous in terms of teaching. If there's 20%, as you said, there's two teachers sitting around, why not? For the older kids, if they opt for remote, are they, are those teachers in a bimodal environment where they're teaching someone in-person, but there's a kid zoomed in on the screen? Because if they are, I'm not sure what's so difficult about them. Are the kids that much more difficult to control at the underage? And if they are, again, you still have two teachers sitting around. So I'm just really curious because those bits of feedback that you've been gathering over the summer appear to have totally missed the point that many parents say, which was that in the spring, it didn't work because you weren't doing synchronous teaching for the younger kids. And then instead of fixing that... And then instead of fixing that, you've chosen asynchronous that doesn't work for anybody. Now, I can imagine a situation where somebody has to get back to work. Maybe they can get a babysitter to sit around while the kid's on the screen being taught. But to have someone actually supervise that education is harder. And essentially, you're making it impossible for anybody who has to go to work to choose the option they feel is safer. And that kind of blackmail just doesn't sit right with me. And I'm sorry for the term, it's a little loaded, but it doesn't feel right. Doesn't feel like you've listened. Doesn't feel like when anyone submitted an email, they got a courtesy response that your response was received. We got to wait a week to hear that you said you heard it. I'm reading a document that hasn't changed in a month. And I know there's changes that says updated on this date. Grammar changes, there's mild updates. Nothing's changed in a month. We've been giving feedback and getting nothing back. It's very, very frustrating. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on Zoom?
Kendra? Over here. This gentleman has stood up several.
Oh, okay. I was just trying to alternate between, but go ahead. Go ahead. Could you let us know your name?
Yeah, my name is Brandon Morris. Can you raise that a little bit? Yeah, sure. My name is Brandon Morris. Morris, M-O-R-I-S. My question for you guys is with the distance learning and the breaking up of the teams and the schooling, why isn't it for a whole week? So just think about it. If you have kids going into school for a week, you could break up every grade, first and second, going in one for one week, you know, third and fourth for another. They go in for their one week, then they're off for their weekend. Now you have team two coming in who's then in for an entire week. There's another, you know, five days. So now you're at seven days for the kids who have been home. Then you have the following weekend. That's now nine days of the 10 that the CDC recommends for quarantine. You could do the same alternation with teachers. You could have teachers home and doing distance learning for a week with their students and then in classroom for a week with their students, being able to be there. This would also give you more space in the school. You could split up the same class among three classrooms. You would be having more space, more safety, the same bus routes with less kids on the buses. You literally are able to address every issue that you have, but yet nobody's brought it up. So that's what I would like to do, is bring that up to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Elena Tomlinson?
Yes, first, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I appreciate it and I certainly appreciate the difficulty of the task that you are all facing and our community is facing. My question is, as a teacher at the high school, if I have a headache that is potentially a symptom of COVID, so I would be required to call our work well and report that, and I may, I would be advised to stay home. If it turns out that it wasn't actually COVID and it was just a headache, typically I would go in with a headache and take ibuprofen, would I be required to use sick time? And what about teachers who are new and don't have sick time to use? And then I guess my second question that I would like to raise would be, has the district secured the necessary PPE, personal protective equipment needed for the year, in addition to items like hand sanitizer? So thank you for taking the time again to let me speak and I appreciate it.
Thank you. In the room, we still had, I think, Ed Cormier. Did you want to speak again?
All right. Good evening, Ed Cormier, again. Margaret Chase and a junior high kid. All right, so with the full distance Calvert learning stuff, if parents had questions or they had problems, it was a hotline, but if I've got a math question, like I'm a science guy, I can do math and science for my kid. I have an English question or another question, can I still reach out to Mrs. Goat or Miss, you know, the teachers? Or are they completely away from me now and I don't have access to the teachers with it? Because I'm reading over their shoulder, you know, I can do some of the stuff, I can't do all the stuff. So what do we do with that? The survey, it's not a survey, it's the final piece. I think there's a lot of confusion on social media of people thought it might have been a survey and it wasn't the final choice. And it sounds like tonight that was the final choice. And my concern is that if parents have already filled that out, but then now have heard some of this and have now changed their mind, can they backpedal? Can they pull that back and change it because of what they've heard? Or is that the final thing? And if it's not the final thing, if it was just a survey to gather data, when is the drop dead date where a parent has to make the choice? And right now to make that choice, you're asking us to make that choice sight unseen. Margaret Chase Smith has been completely renovated, don't know what any of the rooms look like. I am basing my information off of the basement classroom in Willard that my kid went to last year. There is absolutely no way to social distance in that basement classroom at Willard. And the new junior high, you drive by it, it still looks like a major construction site. There's punch lists or not punch lists. So is the junior high ready to accept those students? I don't know. And as a parent, I would think that it would be great if you went into each classroom and took a picture of the teacher and took a picture of their room, because the guidelines can't have carpets, can't have rugs, can't have curtains, can't have beanbags. What am I sending my kid into? Not just to safety wise, but what am I, what is the classroom going to look like? You're asking me to make a choice to send them or not send them and I don't know where I'm sending them. Summer camps have got pictures of what the camp looks like before you send them. If we go red, does everybody go to the Calvert edimentum pieces? Or do we, what happened, or does red look like the spring when we're all distance learning? And if the district does pivot to red and we're there for a certain amount of time, can parents come off of the edimentum no good thing and go back to their teacher? Is that, what's that process look like and what are those pivot pieces? There's been a lot of talk about ventilation. I don't think Willard has any ventilation. There's rooms with AC units, there's basement rooms. What, does Willard have the right ventilation? You know, coming from a submarine guy, we're looking at the diesel, we're looking at the ventilation fans, what's the half-life? How does the air circulate? That's my language. I speak that. That's life and death on a submarine. What does the ventilation look like at Willard? Is the ventilation online at the junior high? Does it work? What's going on at MCS in the high school? And aside from the hardware, do you have the staff? Do you have the maintenance staff to maintain that ventilation through the year? There was a lot of resignations last school board meeting. I'm anticipating a lot more resignations. Do you have the staff, the custodial staff and the maintenance staff to maintain that equipment to keep our students and our staff safe? And, you know, my wife is an ed tech at the school. I am friends with dozens of teachers. I volunteered in the school for many years. I know lots of these teachers and staff and I'm concerned for them. I want to, you know, this, you know, like Dr. Held said, you know, COVID is not going away. I work for the federal government. We're in phase two. We're not even looking at phase four. It's months away. I'm, my concern is how do we do this safely and keep those high-risk teachers that have served us for decades, you know, safe? And our new teachers that have kids and young families, keep them safe. Because if a teacher, like we just heard, he's got a headache and he stays home, what happens to that classroom? Do we have the substitute staff or are we going to have a room full of kids without a teacher because they've all got a headache? So that's, that's what I got. I wish I had some better notes to end on, but I guess the big thing is can I ask for help with math homework?
Thank you, Ed. Are there any others on Zoom, Steve?
We have two others right now. Peter Fuentes is the next one.
All right. My question is, why was so much effort put into the previous method of schooling and not into improving distance learning? And we've known from, for so long that this is a life-threatening disease and no effort has been put into modernizing education. As mentioned, kids are kids. The current state of remote learning is lacking. And what will it take to make the changes needed to improve education and safety? You're relying on the community and the community is constantly exposed to false information about communicability about the disease, infection. They say kids, kids are just fine. Meanwhile, you know, we have, there's reports of children age seven and under dying. You know, it's, we're relying on the community. It seems like a rather lopsided approach. It's, to me, I just, I, it seems like we're working on keeping things at the status quo when the status quo is no longer the status quo. Everything, everything has changed and we're risking our kids out here by sending them to school. And just as this man said, we're, you know, we don't know about ventilation. We're being told all these things and we're being told to trust you. How can we trust you if we don't actually see or know what, have proof of all these things that are happening?
Thank you.
Next is Nicole Saviello.
I am wondering if a shortened day for elementary school children is still being discussed. It will be a very long day for four, five and six-year-old students to be wearing masks and sitting for long periods of time to learn in a way that is very different than they have been taught in the past.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here in the room that wanted to do a public comment? Okay. Do you want to take time to answer some of these, Mr. Nelson, probably Mrs. Lambert? And if there's special questions?
I've been trying to take notes, so I'll do my best with that. I think the first one was asking about sports. Right now, there's no decision that's been made on sports. The, I know that our athletic directors, main principal association have been working extremely hard. Questions that I have as the superintendent in charge of this plan is I'd want to make sure that to me, the priority should be reopening schools safely first. And I'd also want to make sure that the guidelines that we have in our plan also align up with what the guidelines are in the sports and there are no inconsistencies there. I've been told that we can expect information, possibly a decision around sports coming up in the next couple of days to be able to look at that. So right now, most of that is on hold. They were looking at the first day that people could do athletics would be on Tuesday, September 8th, with the first competition being two weeks after that. There has been plans out there to start conditioning process as early as next Monday, the 24th. So right now, that's why you're looking to see a decision that will be coming back hopefully in the next couple of days that will guide that. I know as superintendent as someone that realizes the importance of school activities, whether it be athletics, whether it be music, whether it be drama, whether it be clubs and activities, the importance of that. Our hope is that we can offer something, but I also want to make sure it's within the guidelines. You also asked about transportation, whether or not that can be both ways. And we asked the question because some people might be able to drop off in the morning on their way to work, but not pick up on the way home, for example. There's other people whose circumstances may not allow them to do that and they need a ride both ways. So yes, if people need a ride both ways, they will be able to do that. Are teachers given the choice? Right now, students are given the choice for that. What we've done is we issued back at the end of July, I did issue out all of what our return to work guidelines would be. Those are things that were developed statewide, but also with legal counsel. So we did put those out and we did give options at that time what people had available to them. But I did not go out and give people a particular choice for that. That was done intentionally because I was not sure we were going to be able to make all of those accommodations, if that's what people wanted. And I also wasn't sure in terms of, as people would come back to be able to, be able to make that choice. It also became an idea of equity. If I had a number of teachers that wanted to be able to have that choice, but I didn't need, I didn't need that many, who was going to get selected? How that was going to be in that process? So the decision was made for us to be able to go through and have the availability for our teachers and our staff that are available to them based on the guidelines that are in place in terms of whether it is due to their own health condition or if it's due to childcare that the options are that are in place. We've been monitoring that in terms of people who've let us know that they had concerns because I want to make sure that that doesn't swing over in terms of us not being able to have enough staff with that. That's definitely something that still could happen now as people finalize the plans and they also know what their own personal circumstances are also going to be. But it's not something that comes out perfect to say that, oh, I've got exactly two first grade teachers or two second grade teachers or two third grade teachers. And so that's hard because as superintendent, one thing that, as I mentioned earlier, we do do our best to try to accommodate, but we've also got to be able to be into that situation where it can also be fair for them. In terms of the online K through four program, not aligning with the state requirements for homeschooling, that's something we're going to have to check out in terms of that. All indications are for us is that it does, but I also don't want to assume that either in terms of if that's something that we're going to have to be able to look at that. In terms of, in terms of the testing and the color scheme that doesn't have a county or Sanford data in terms of that, I know that in addition to those, I'm also the school department contracts with York Hospital, so I am in contact with them, regular contact. I will not say it's not daily contact, but regular contact. Once again, I know that there's limitations to what they have there, but I know that throughout as we've been going on, their rate of positive tests that they've had has gone down, gone down, and they're down to somewhere around 0.6, and that's why their tests have gone up. So those are things, may not be a perfect metric, but I want people to know that we are also paying attention to what is also going on in Sanford and our community with In terms of looking at it about distance learning, if it could be a week's time, a week on, week off, those are some things that we also considered. For us, one of the things that we noticed last year, last spring, we were having situations where there was disengagement. There were situations that if we weren't contacting the kids or seeing kids, that they were also falling off. And so for us, we wanted to do our best to try to make sure that, I know at the high school and the middle school, in those situations, those would be situations where the schedules that we have there are not, they're on semester block schedules that doesn't eliminate totally, but it does also eliminate some of the moves that have to happen in terms of that. But mostly it was for the connection with that. Elena's question, as a teacher, if I have a headache, I stay home. Does it come out of my sick time? Usually, in the past, if I had a headache, I might take some Advil. I'd be able to come and go through. Those are things right now that we're working on. There's, I know that the nurses throughout the state are having their meetings and webinars and those are questions exactly that we're getting to be able to try to come back to give us the guidance that we can provide to our people who are handling those situations, but also our families in terms of that. So that's something that has come up that we are looking at to try to be able to help. And where is that balance between having people to say, wait a minute, you're telling me to stay home? Is that something that has to be my sick time or is that something that's being able to be part of the school telling me to stay home? And we're having ongoing meetings with our teachers union so that we can be able to try to get the answers to those questions to be able to build best help. Do we have enough PPE with that? We just, last Friday, We just um, last Friday, uh, we had nine pallets delivered here at the high school. That's in addition to the first line that we've already got. So yes, I feel comfortable that we have the P P E that's required for us to be able to come back. Uh, the question is, do we have enough for a whole year in terms of that? Uh, that's something um. Um, the honest answer is I'm not, I don't know in terms of it's for the whole year. I know that uh we've got um our sanitizer stands scheduled to be delivered on August twenty sixth. Once again, until they hear in front of me, there's that piece, I can tell you in terms of all the other P P E equipment. Uh, with that, we do um have that and I am comfortable on that. Uh, Ed's question about talking about math, if I have a question with that, do I reach out to my teacher? Who do I reach out to? Uh, we need you to be able to reach out to somebody, uh, but I'm not sure yet. If I don't wanna um make a promise to you that yes, it's gonna be a particular teacher who's gonna be able to go and answer that. But we're not gonna leave you hanging in terms of how that has to be you getting some information back to you to be able to try to come back. Uh, in its assist. The attention uh thing, I, yeah, there's probably some confusion that's around that. But that's something that we now need to get the information out there now that it's a plan to be our best. Just like we're making a decision on August seventeenth, we understand that circumstances and some things can change. If we did have people who sent that out or filled out it already and they wanna change that. I would think there's a process to be able to do that, contact us at central office or contact the school. So we could be able to go back and make those changes so that people could be able to be assigned. What's gonna be difference is, we're building our plans on this, on everything between transportation and classes and. Um, physical distancing and where we are, that it's gonna be hard for people, once you choose after it starts. To be able to come back. We've asked that you don't come back at that time, you have to wait out to a marking period through at the K through four level, it's a, it's a trimester. Now, if we do go and we do go to a red situation. And it does look like that that red situation is gonna be something that could go on longer. Then I think we're committed to making sense to see if that's something about how we can bring people back into the fold to be able to do that. If it's gonna be a red situation that's more in a short term focus, for example. I'm not sure we're gonna be able to make that commitment, but if it is something that looks like it's going to. Uh, yeah, I think we can be able to have that because one of the things that we were looking at in the first place. Was making sure that our teachers have the capacity to be able to meet the people in front of them every day and also do that. If everyone is distanced, then that becomes um easier to be able to do that. Do you have the maintenance staff to maintain? Uh, yeah, that's uh, that's a concern that we always have in terms of coming back to be able to make sure that we have the protocols. And the things that we're telling you that we're gonna have, we've gotta be able to follow through on those. If we don't, for somewhat uh, uh, for whatever reason, then it's upon me as the superintendent. Just like I would in terms of in February, if we were not safe to open up school, I'd have to be able to make a decision to close school. Do I um, uh, do I feel great about that if that had to happen? Sure, I don't, okay, but at the end, I'm not gonna hesitate to be able to have to make that decision in the event that. For some reason, we haven't been able to follow through on the things that we needed to do um to be able to do that. Uh, staffing is a concern uh at the end of the day, and as I come back to be able to know. Where it's not something where we might be able to accommodate each and every situation. I still want all of our faculty, all of our staff to know, they need to do also what is in the best interest for them. And their families as well as it comes back. It's just, it's kind of a lousy situation that we're in to try to be able to come back to be able to do that. But at the end of the day, just like it comes back for our families, uh, people involved, this is a really, really hard decision. In terms of doing that and people would be able to uh have to hopefully do that. We've tried to give some flexibility, we've tried to give some options. I also know that those options also come back um with there are that some um. May not meet everyone's um satisfaction in terms of what they were hoping for. But once again, I don't think that was by design, that was more about us trying to be able to work on the things that we could. Um, and then. How can we trust with that? At the, at the end of the day, I I kinda talked about that, that I know that I don't, as superintendent of the school department, that is something I do not take lightly. I did let everyone know that there is some element of risk, there always is uh with that. But if there's situations where uh we're putting uh something where we can't follow through on the uh with it. Uh, Nicole asked about the shorter day, and that is something that we've talked about. That's something that I think would really work out well, especially for our K through four students who have to be um. Uh, wearing masks all day and also limited in terms of uh what they've got. Uh, for other engagement opportunities. One of the things that we're looking at is, you know that Wednesdays are early release days. We're also looking at what could we do about having the early release day schedule, not just on Wednesdays, but Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. I think on some ways that might be inconvenience on families, but I think the trade off. Of being able to have less time to be able to do that is something I think is very. Um, interesting and and um attractive for us uh to be able to do that. Before I commit to that and before I say something I can't follow through on, a big part of that is also gonna be on our transportation. Transportation in a lot of ways drives what we're able to do there. So that's something that we're kinda paying attention to in terms of the intention form that we've got people out. And as we look at that, that's gonna be able to come back and be able to look at that to say, hey. Our kids right now, I know it's easier for me with this mask because I have been using it. Uh, pretty regularly uh since the beginning of the summer. But I also know that it wasn't easy when I first started, I had to be able to build that up uh with that. So that's something that we're looking at uh as a possibility. It's not part of this plan because at the end, right now, because it's not something that I know that we can be able to follow through on. In terms of the other factors. And I think that was, I might have missed some, I apologize, but that was trying to do the best that we could.
So, I I think at this point, we'll turn it over to the school committee, um, does someone?
I just had one question, I just wanted to make sure, is there anything that Matt did miss that you may wanna address before we do start our discussions? Or is there anybody else on Zoom?
Yes, there is one more Zoom question. Would you like to take another Zoom question?
Yeah, we can take one more and we also have one here in person as well.
Sure, Heather Nelson.
Hi, um, my question is, um, I have a pre-K and a kindergarten, kindergarten study. And one of the questions was, um, do you guys have a plan for um pre-K remote learning? Um, and the other question was, um, you were saying that we have to self-check the um students before school. Is there an app that we have to use to let you guys know of the symptoms, if they have any symptoms? And what is the actual start date for pre-K and kindergarten? Cause I thought I'd overheard um, one date you are talking about and then in the packet it said another date. Thank you.
Welcome, I'll answer one of those, Mr. Busier, you can come down if you don't mind to answer the other ones around specifically. Um, pre-K. I will talk about uh the app that is um gonna be part of the symptom check. The app, uh, we're using that as uh interfacing with our frontline um system. Platform that we use, so yes, that will be something that we're in the process of developing. And that information and that, those directions and that app will be released to families to be able to assist them with that. Um, symptom check, to be able to help as people are coming um, coming to school.
I met with Mrs. Dow today and the first day of pre-K is scheduled for Monday, the fourteenth. If our school schedule gets approved tonight and she's gonna be talking to parents about that online option will look like uh when she gives you a call about screening, so.
And then, do we have, um, oh, yes, we have Amy Sevigny, I believe.
Hi, everyone, how are you? You guys are doing a great job, thank you for everything you're doing. Um, I've been getting a few people texting me questions as well. I guess, one of the things I'll start with, um. Are the kids with the I E Ps, I know that you briefly talked about it, and I know Stacy is here, um. But when I'm looking at some of, you know, when you were talking about the, those who are gonna do the distance learning. Will they all be able to have the I E P meetings before school starts? So that they're getting the, I guess, right level of math or reading. It just seems like a lot of I E P meetings that you may have to have before the start of school. Is it on? Um, is it on?
So, for families that choose the completely distance learning. There needs to be an I E P meeting that then looks at. So the I E P determines what's a free and appropriate public education. Distance learning is not gonna replicate that instruction. So then the team needs to come together and make a determination about what that does look like. I think one of the challenges we have is. The driving force in an I E P is where that kid is currently performing. And we need some time to get to know where those student skills are. So, um, there are now twice weekly meetings with the Department of Ed. And it's doing that, um, so. When I do, it makes that, oh, okay. Um, so, when we're asking, yes, we need to hold I E P meetings, but there is not the same requirement. Of making sure those meetings occur prior to the start of school, with the elementary starting on the fourteenth. It does afford us more time and our intent is to hold those meetings for those parents that choose completely distance learning.
And I'll just add that as we were coming back, the recommendation I made tonight to extend that start to the fourteenth. That was another reason that was factored into there, knowing that there's gonna be some I E P meetings that we'd wanna be able to have time for.
I guess a lot of people that are, you know, messaging me and asking me is, you know, and I know, I think it's like, kind of like the elephant in the room is. When a decision will be made and that, a lot of that is because, you know, there's been conversations that you had, you know, just recently about. The start date for the K through four, I have five children, so I've got three schools, kids everywhere. And so, you know, if there, if you end up doing like the half days Monday through Friday, what those start dates. I did see in a survey about, and I really appreciated that you gave families the option to drop off, I think at seven forty-five, which. Does help a lot of the working families who are choosing to send their kids back to school. Um, but I guess it's, it's just kind of like parents are needing to kind of like make a plan. Get, you know, if they are a half day, especially, you know, K through four, I have a very flexible schedule. Um, yes, I do work despite people thinking I don't, um, but, you know, just kind of like, they need a plan for more than two weeks. Um, or even, you know, it's just hoping to get that decision, I guess, really soon. Um, do you think that there's conversations about having it even postponed another week? And if so, how soon would you let us know, just because, again, for planning purposes? Um, where I work, a lot of my friends, their schools have pushed it back even a week further than the fourteenth. Um. The COVID procedures, so I know that's also another big, big question, a loaded one. And I don't think, I'm not expecting you to have the answer right now, I'm sure there's a lot of nurses and doctors and everybody is working. And by the way, I'm a nurse as well. Um, but just if a, if a patient or a kid has um COVID symptoms. And I think kind of almost giving that out to families, if this is what will happen. Sooner than later, I think will also kind of help anxieties. Because I know, you know, there was a situation, you know, a while ago in Sanford, and so they followed this. Will that be a similar situation that the school district does? Or, I think that that would really help a lot of people, I think, make their decisions. Um, and when the kid, the families who decided to send their kids to school. Will those students be given a mask as they enter? Or will they all be required to bring their own? Um, and I say that because I just look at my nephew, his is soaking wet because he just licks it all day. And so, you know, that's kinda not doing its job either, and so I just wondered if when the kids arrive, are they gonna be handed one? So that everybody kinda has the same thing, um, or not. Um, one question that was a good one was, would Ed text? So I guess typically in the school, um, Ed texts are pulled um to work as substitutes pretty frequently. And I guess they were just wondering if they would be paid the sub rate or not. Um. And I think that's it, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Amy, um, I think you talked about obviously the challenge that it is for families to be able to plan. And enough lead time and enough notice is critical. Um, I do wanna say that I understand that. Um, I'm not in that spot as much as I used to be because my kids are older, but I still haven't forgotten how challenging that is. Uh, please understand that we have well intentions to be able to give people notice. But even through that, there are some things that come up that are gonna make it challenging and make it, make it difficult. I I want people to know that we're not up here just trying to. Um, wing it or make decisions in a way that are gonna be impactful. We're trying to always balance that out to be able to try to give people notice to be able to do that. It's incredibly challenging for us because in Sanford, unlike a lot of other school departments. We've got some major construction going on that is um. Um, challenging uh for them. In terms of the COVID symptoms that you talked about, one of the things we've asked for as superintendents. Um, is we've reached out to the Department of Education to see if they can be able to develop. Kind of that flow chart type of thing that we're gonna then be able to share with families. So that that's something that's gonna be almost universal throughout the state, whether you're in Fort Kent or whether you're in Sanford. Uh, to be able to do that, we've been told that it's coming, that they're working with the C D C on that. And when we have that information, we'll be able to go out uh and share it. In terms of the face coverings and the masks that you talked about, uh, right now, it's our expectation that. Our staff and our families would provide their own. But at the same time, please understand that if that's gonna be a um difficult or challenging. Uh, for someone, we'll be able to make sure that they have the mask, that that won't be something that they're gonna not be allowed to be in school. If something happens during the school day, we'll have opportunities to be able to come back. But rather than saying, we're gonna give you two and after that, no, we, we, we expect families to come in and staff that to, to bring their own. Uh, that meets the guidelines, but after that, no one would ever be in a situation that they couldn't have that um for it. And then when you talked about Ed texts pulling the substitutes, yeah, one of the things that we're gonna have is that possibility does exist. And so I have had conversations with our union so that we can be able to develop those parameters. As we're building up our um applications for the coronavirus relief funds and CARES money. There's money in there for us to be able to address these types of things. And so that's, we're building that into our application so that we can. Be able to help that in those situations, whereas in other situations. Prior to that, without that funding, it might be challenging in some ways. Um, but we've got mechanisms in place that we are reexamining what those are. So that we can be able to come back and and treat our people fairly uh with that. I think the other thing we also wanna do is when it comes to our staff, we wanna give them choice too. Uh, it, it's okay for them to say, no, I'm not comfortable doing that. Um, if that's something that is asked and we don't want them to feel like they absolutely have to. So we're looking at trying to, and that to me is. So we're looking at trying to, and that to me is, uh, those types of creativity that we need because we're going to need, you talked about increasing the drop off times, uh, lengthening those and the pickup times. Well, we're going to need those staff and we're going to need those supervisors. And for us, uh, that to me is an opportunity for us to look at some of our employees. Uh, they might be hourly employees as an ed tech where that might be able to allow them to get more hours. Uh, overtime, for example, it may be other stipends that we can offer about that that are going to help our people to be able to come back in those situations. I look at that as a win-win because those people know us, they know our schools, they know our kids, uh, as opposed to us trying to hire someone from the outside to be able to come in and do those situations. That doesn't mean we can't do that, but it's those types of things that we're looking at to be able to try to help our employees, uh, with that.
Okay. So, um, I did want to check in, um, Don Jamison, are you participating in the meeting now? I thought I saw you here on Zoom. No, he might be just listening in. Okay. He wasn't sure if you would be available. Okay. So, um, John or Emily?
Well, I'll get started. Um, first, I just want to say thank you to the parents, um, to all the people who have been sending us emails this week. This is, um, as long as I've been on the school committee, I can honestly say this is probably the most difficult decision that I've ever had to make, probably in my professional life. Um, reading all these emails that we got this week, there was a common theme that I saw and one of the themes, and it's the right theme, is everybody was having personal discussions about their own children and their own lives, which is the most important thing you can do. And when I was reading them, and they're all great questions and great observations, one of the most, one of the things that I saw is how much everybody really cares and everybody really cares about this community. And when I came away with, is, there's not going to be a bad decision from a parent's standpoint or from a school committee's standpoint. Cause the decision's going to be the right decision for you and what you as a parent and you as a, and your children have to make for yourselves. And this decision's going to be on the school department to make the right decision for the school department in a whole. And I'm sitting back here and that's what I just keep going around and around and around. And because as many of these emails that I got of, we can't have our kids in the school system at this particular point, we got as many, um, emails of kids that need to, that they want them, um, back in the school system. And if anybody knows me, I've been paying a lot of attention to this all summer, all fall, I mean, spring, and I take it very serious. And, um, Saturday afternoon, I happened to go to Jerry's Market late in the afternoon and, and I was reading some, in a couple of emails and I was just in reading them and there was, they were, they were good ones, but it was really bothering me and I just got deep in a trance reading it. And I walked into Jerry's Market, got what I wanted at the counter, started walking down, another lady's coming at me and she's walking by and she's just looking at me. And when she looked at me, I looked at myself and I wasn't wearing my mask. And if anybody sees me outside, I'm always wearing my mask. But I got, I was so deep in thought that I walked away and I was like, oh my God, I didn't have my mask on. I walked up to the, uh, couch to pay my, uh, my groceries and I apologized to the cashier and there was a lady behind me and I apologized to her for my behavior because it was wrong. And the reason I tell you that is how serious I do take this. And I was very embarrassed on how and what I did that afternoon. Um, so where I'm going to go, I don't know, but I just want everybody to know that your decisions are the right ones. And no, no matter what you have to do, it's right for you, right for you and your family. And, um, we're going to do this very similar here on what we have to do for the whole district. Um, but I just want to say thank you and thank you for being here tonight.
Okay. Um, so I just wanted to address, um, I need to take a breath for a minute. I just wanted to address, um, one of the first comments that we heard, um, by Mr. Kleinlock. I sat in your shoes for about 10 years religiously coming to school board, uh, meetings, budget committee meetings. I just kind of immersed myself into, to that world. Um, it wasn't until three years ago that I decided, well, I'm not just a parent and I'm going to, um, you know, run for school committee. So I'm all about educating parents and where to find information. Agendas are always on our website. Our website, probably like most, like the city website can use a lot of work. But if you go to the front page, you go to menu, you go down to school committee, you hit the little plus sign by school committee and you can find our agendas on there. Yep. If you can't email me, I will make sure you have it. I also have a dedicated Facebook page just for myself for school committee and I always post them on, on there. Okay. I also just wanted to acknowledge that we have received all the emails that have been sent in. It's very clear that, um, just as conflicted as I am, the community is conflicted. We have a very different set of parents that want kids in school full time. Let's, let's get it done. We've got to get back to normal. And we have other parents that are worried, rightfully so, and want to have their kids stay home. But what I have, uh, learned through all of this and learned from my 13 ti- 13 years of living in this community, and I keep hammering at home, is that we must do better at communication. We're getting there, but we must do better. And that's communication with all stakeholders, not just parents, but, uh, nurses in our schools, especially particular to this, teachers. Everyone should feel valued and have their voice be heard regardless of opinion. So I ha- I, I have lost so much sleep over this, as I'm sure many people have. I have pages of questions here, but what I keep coming back to, uh, is are we ready? Are we prepared? And I don't have an answer for that. And the reason why I keep coming back to those two questions is because I look at the, and I know no reopening plan is perfect. It's not a one solution, you know, one size fits all for parents. But I'm having some problems still with, inequity in our remote learning, uh, for our K through four. I have, uh, some issues still with, uh, teacher voice maybe not possibly being heard. How are we meeting their needs for their return to school? Are we meeting all their accommodations? Uh, do we even have the staffing at each building to, to accomplish what we want to? Yeah, I have a lot of questions, but it just boils down to are we ready and are we prepared? And again, I acknowledge that there's no perfect solution.
So I can echo a lot of what the others have said. I, I have still a lot of safety questions. I, I'm a cautious person by nature. So in a perfect world, I would say, you know what, um, we can't open the schools yet, but we need to open the schools for a variety of reasons and that meets the needs of a lot of people. So we need to go by those guidelines. Um, I'm still concerned about many things. Um, again, how many teachers do we have? Because if nothing else, I hope this community has really, um, paid attention to just how critical our teachers, not just our community and our country, are to our economy, to people, to taking care of our children. I think, um, I think we appreciate teachers to a degree, but sometimes I don't think they get the level of acknowledgement that they have, they need. And this has taught us a lot about that. Um, am I worried about a lot of the teachers? Yes. Am I, I'm worried about school opening. I, um, pay attention every single day to what's happening in the country and we do not have, uh, anything from the borders to keep things, this could change for us, um, in, in a day or two, my understanding. I hope it doesn't. I'm proud of me for what we're doing. But the bottom line is, I think, I know that Mr. Nelson, the administrative team, other people have worked really hard for over three months, um, creating a plan, uh, adapting, listening, getting, uh, question, input. Are there questions that left, uh, still left out there? Yes, there are. So even after tonight, when a decision gets made, um, I don't think it all stops trying to brainstorm and, um, answer more questions and be flexible. Um, I do worry about, uh, one of the major things is I know we have the collaboration with York Hospital, but I do go back to that. What happens? What happens the first time we have a student or a teacher in a classroom? We need a go-to plan right away. Um, is that testing going to happen right away? Cause suddenly everyone in that classroom is going to need to quarantine. And now we've lost a teacher. Um, we've got kids, we've got kids who have probably already exposed people in their homes. So the other point I would make is we keep talking schools, teachers, students, parents, but this is a community issue as well. Because if there is an outbreak, this really impacts our entire community. Um, so it's all those things, like anyone else, there is no perfect answer. And, and I keep coming down to, um, we're all nervous because we want certainty and that's not possible. We've got this virus. We don't know how it's going to behave and we cannot be certain about anything. So if anything going forward, whatever plan gets into, put, put into place and what we agreed to, to start with, I, I think the key word we're going to have because-
Six, six, no, 600. The, the convention on that.
Flexibility. We need to all understand that this can change on a dime. We could make a decision tonight and it could change next week. And, and I think that's critical for people to understand. Who's talking?
Brett was just talking, Kendra.
Oh.
Don Jamison's coming on Zoom.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
Hey, can you guys hear me? Am I good? Okay. Um, hey, sorry Kendra, when you brought me up early and caught us off guard so I didn't get unmuted in time and you kind of, you moved on. So I figured I'd let everybody else go rather than, than disrupt. Um, and I just, I want to echo what you were just saying Kendra. I, I think you made some really good points. I mean, you've all been making great points. You know, John's right. This is a huge decision, something we've all been agonizing over. Emily, you know, good points as well. But I really want to focus on how you were saying Kendra that if not every, nothing's known. I mean, this is such a huge unknown everywhere. So for me, it comes down to really putting my trust in Matt and his team. Uh, they've put countless hours into this planning. And is it perfect? No. You know, we all wish it could be, uh, but we do have limited resources. You know, they're doing the best they can. They're, they're agonizing over the decisions and they want the best for every single student. Um, so really, once again, for me, it's going to come back to, you know, do I trust Matt and his team to do what's best for the, the community, the staff, the students? And I do, I always do. I think that's always the foremost on every decision they make, you know, regardless of whether we're in a pandemic or not. Um, so that's all I wanted to say. Thanks for, uh, the time Kendra.
Kendra, can I have one more comment?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Actually, this is a statement, um, from one of our other school board members Jonathan makes who can't be here this evening. Uh, he really wishes he could be present, but he can't be because of, uh, impending surgery tomorrow. There will be winners and there will be losers from this crisis. No way can all of us walk, excuse me, no way can all of us away satisfied being right, I read, I've read a wide variety of valuable emails offering great ideas, yet it's near impossible to thread them together in one size fits all. Our neighboring schools regionally, statewide and in New England are struggling with the same conversation. I would ask that you let the superintendent and administration do their jobs we've hired them to do. They too are doing this for the first time. Many have children in our systems in our neighboring districts. We should be working on a new educational structure, not let this crisis entangle in, um, let's gain now for a robust, excuse me, let's plan now for a robust summer school for remediation of all levels. There'll be a positive COVID test and likely schools will be closing. Individuals, maybe all the schools. Future students will read about COVID-19 in their history classes and how education has lost for two years. We need the right, we need to be writing the script on how we helped all of those students after the vaccine was found. I'd like to remind listeners that there are many, uh, there are many complex issues that continue go on behind the curtain in all school divisions. Construction alone is enough to change the color of Matt's hair, which us that are close to Matt have seen it changed and a little bit of loss. But most important is one of the things that Jonathan was in my conversation with him this morning, is that we really have to be looking at what we're going to be doing for our summer school programs this coming year, because there is a lot of education that has been lost and will continue to be lost. And what do we need to do to make that work for this district? And that was Jonathan. Thank you.
Kendra, can I say something again?
Yes.
So I understand we're, we'll be voting on this tonight and I, I will, I am prepared to take a vote. So I just wanted to make that clear if I, I didn't before. I still want to dig a little bit deeper into the remote learning, um, option for K through four. There, you know, there's no winners in that situation because we want to honor, uh, teachers not having to do, you know, double duty. That, that would be really tough. Teach in person, um, full time and then get home and have to, uh, answer for those who are choosing remote learning. Is there any creativity around that? Like, I, I just, I wish there were a different answer. I mean, cause I do have to agree that it, it's not, it's not a great plan for someone who needs to stay home. Um, it's basically leaving the, um, parent to, you know, do all the teaching with some assisting, but it doesn't sound like there's much assisting involved. I, I'm talking in circles. It just stinks is what I'm trying to say. And I wish that we could find a little bit more hands-on for that option for those families.
So one of the things that I'm careful about is I want to make sure that before we do make any promises there, that we can deliver on those. And so is there a possibility for creativity? Is there some of the ideas that people talked about, can we still bring them in to a setting where it might be part of a morning meeting and some of those other connections? That's a possibility. I don't want to say it's going to happen and then I don't deliver on it. Um, I think that if we can find that balance there where that connection is still going on, uh, we might be able to do that. I talked about before where, um, we were talking about adding responsibilities for people and that might be extra hours or stipends to be able to do that. That's something else that we might be able to look at. Can I look at it and say that your child's teacher is absolutely going to be delivering that for your child? I won't go there yet. Uh, but there might be some possibilities and some flexibility, but I'd rather not put ourselves out there to say, uh, yeah, we can absolutely guarantee that. We hope that we've got some ideas where there might be people who are part of a group there that we can bring them in as a connection with a class there to be able to look at that. But until we actually see where we're at with numbers and where things are at, I'm stopping short on that just because the last-
the last thing I'd want to do is not be able to come back and, and be able to deliver on that.
And I understand that. I think maybe if parents could under, could hear that, um, we all understand that this is a fluid situation, and plans can pivot at any time. If they could hear that just because we, and I know it doesn't help for their initial making a decision, that, that's going to be a personal decision for them, that's going to be really tough. Um, but if they could hear that the Calvert learning for, for remote, um, is always going to be evaluated, and there could be changes with that down the road, um, I think that would be helpful. Because here's where I'm, where my mind is going with that. So if we have to, um, say a family, Family A is choosing full remote for their third grader, and Family B is choosing to have their third grader go to school four days a week. Um, and then, um, Family A decides after the marking period that they're now comfortable with their child going back into school, how do those two mesh up? Whereas Family A's child has been doing Calvert learning, and Family B's child has been doing traditional learning in a classroom, are, are those going to blend? And, and the same goes for if we have to shut down, um, a school or an entire third grade class. Those kids that are now home that were in the school, they're, they'll still be getting teacher instruction, I'm assuming of some type, or will they go and pivot onto the Calvert program?
Yeah, so, um, in terms of if someone who moves from Calvert back into the classroom in a marking period, is that going to fit seamlessly and perfectly? No. But it's no different than when we have to acclimate, acclimate new people coming into our district. And, and that happens a lot. That happens frequently, uh, to be able to come back and help with that. So I have confidence that that's going to be, those transitions are going to be handled well and appropriately, um, for that to happen. I'll also, um, say, one, one of the challenges that we had was in terms of people's comments for last spring, they wanted situations where they wanted, um, the distance learning needed to be increased around them. And, uh, we heard that. And when you look at increasing those expectations, a lot of that was around synchronous learn happening. And so that's something that this plan does not provide. But if I hear that families are looking for, wait a minute, we understand the things that we can do on our end, but is there a way that we can keep a connection through that class? At some level, or some group, some grouping or some class of what that is, then if that's something that's more in line with what happened last spring, so we've got that piece of it on top of the Calvert, that combination makes a lot of sense to me. But if we've got families who want that experience to be Calvert and much more intent around the, the, that piece of, uh, really the, a lot of synchronous pieces to that, that's something that I don't think we can deliver on. And so that's why I'm being, you know, that's where we've rolled out the plan in the way that we have, that I hear, wait a minute, we understand the Calvert, but are there ways that where the Calvert doesn't have some of those social connections, some of those things back to the class? Can we do that on a limited basis? Or if it's not a specific class, it might be another group of something that brings people in. That's something that I can get my arms around, I think we all can, to be able to look and see what we've got. But I, once again, I, I, people are probably aware of this. I just don't want to say something that we don't come back and be able to deliver on. I want to look out for our faculty and our staff, especially in those K through four grades, to make sure that that's not something that, um, we're not going to be able to follow through. I, I don't want to throw a fly in the ointment. I know I talked to you a little bit about it, um, Matt, and you had some good justification. But I'd like to go there again. Um, what I've been thinking about a lot is the K to five, K to four students, and I know the reason they can go five days a week is we have the space to be able to separate them. Um, I, even though we have the space, I really, uh, not having been a teacher, I can't imagine what it's like to have that many very young children in a room and trying to do right off the bat, teaching them about the mask and the hand hygiene and the distancing. Um, and so I've been wondering if we could do hybrid for that, that grade, those grade levels, K to four, for two weeks, just so that the classes are smaller, the kids get more acclimated, um, and are able to, you know, get to know their teacher a little better, because they've got, you know, there's, there's fewer students for the teacher to deal with at any one time. Um, and that, what we're looking for would be, uh, K through four would come in every day, five through 12 would be, um, groups A, B, and S R T C would be four days a week, and special education, um, would also be four days a week. My understanding, that's the yellow mom. Do you agree with that motion, John?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Okay. Uh, any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to clarify that we are, um, using the hybrid learning model under the yellow designation, again, pre-K to four, five days a week, and then five through 12 with the A B model.
Okay. Any more discussion? Um, all in favor? Don?
Uh, in favor, Kendra. Thanks.
Okay. So that would be I unanimous, four, nothing, again, four. And then the next thing on the agenda is the school calendar. We had tabled that last week, um, until tonight. So, um, do I have a motion on that?
Um, before we make a motion, Matt, is there, um, look at the original calendar. Which, so in doing, uh, the change from, um, pre-K to eight on the September 14th, so what is your vision for the staggered start date, um, for right now?
Yep.
Would it follow much like what if we were doing September 8th? I think you had it as, uh, first day for, oh, it's not specified on here.
Yeah, yeah, it's not, because we haven't updated that because we're K through. But yeah, you would look at on the 14th, you would have grades one and three. Um, and on, for grades five and eight, you would have grades five and seven. Uh, that would be Group A for five and seven.
Okay.
And then on, uh, Tuesday, the 15th, you would have, um, grades two and four. And then on Wednesday, the 16th, you would have kindergarten. And then, and, and, Thursday, you would have all K through four students.
Okay, so on the 14th, you would have grades one and three and five and seven. The 15th, you would have grades two and four and six and eight.
Yep.
And the 16th, you would have the kindergarten. And then on the 17th, would that-
On the 16th, too, at the middle school, you would have Group B for grades five and seven.
Okay.
Yep. And then Thursday, you would have all K through four students, but you'd have grades six and eight for Group B.
Okay.
And then that Friday, you would have all five, I'm sorry, um, not all, um, you would have, uh, Group, Group B. No, I back up. Okay. On Monday, the 14th, you would have Group A grades five and seven. On Tuesday, the 15th, you'd have, uh, Group, uh, B grades six and eight. No, wait. Group A goes on Monday and Tuesday. Divide the grades up. Wednesday, no. And then Thursday, you'd go back to Group B for grades five and seven with them.
Anyhow, they're going to be broken up.
Yes, we're going to follow, we're going to take the same model.
I'm sorry, I threw you off.
No, I should have had it already written down, and I did.
I just want, so that first week is going to mimic as if we were starting on the eighth. We're just pivoting a complete week.
Yes, I don't want to do that and bring everybody back at once, because I'm not sure that that is, uh, it's a big ask for our families. Uh, but I also think it's the right thing to do to bring people back in.
Yep. I have lost, okay. Um, want me to make it?
Yep.
Uh, I make a motion to approve the purlo- proposal as presented to reflect the 2021 school calendar for a start date of Tuesday, September 8th, for grades nine through 12, and a start date of Monday, September 14th, for grades pre-K or just K, just kindergarten?
Yes.
Kindergarten through eighth grade.
Second.
Um, so discussion, um, somewhere in here, um, I think it's important for us to have something in this motion that vacations may change based on, um, what happens. You know, I mean, if we find that we need to close schools for a while, I think we need to have some kind of, um, understanding that vacation times with some notice may change too. So that, for instance, um, if the students end up missing a whole chunk of one month this fall or later into the year, that perhaps next spring, I mean, just as an example, that then April vacation doesn't happen to try to get some makeup in there.
Kendra, should we be doing that in a separate motion? Because this one's the calendar start date. Shouldn't we be doing that one, if, if we do in fact do that one as a separate one?
I'm, I'm not saying to make a decision on it, but just as part of it, the, um, that there is that option to, I don't know, maybe as a separate motion.
Well, I just want to add, if you remember this past spring, uh, when we were into the distance learning, we did make an adjustment for the calendar, okay, in terms of, because remember we were all in, uh, in, um, stay-at-home, stay-at-home order, and that was something that we did do to adjust the calendar then. So I think, I think what we're saying is that is an option. And I think what you're saying is that is something that absolutely could happen again and come with that. And that's something I think we have to be prepared to do, but I'm not sure it needs to be involved.
In this one?
Okay.
Yeah.
I think just people being on notice that that could happen. But, okay, so it doesn't need to be-
Yeah, I don't think that one should be in that one, just because we get, we've already done it. And if we have to do it, we'll, you know, do it at that point with forward advance notice.
All right. So, uh, we have that motion, and, um, any more discussion? All in favor of that? Don? Is Don available? Uh, so I, I would say at this point, why don't we call that, um, three I's and, and one abstention? Because he doesn't seem to be available right now. Okay, um, so now we are on to resignations.
Yep, we've had two resignations come up, uh, one in food service and one in Ed Tech at Carl J. Williams, uh, for the upcoming, uh, year. I want to thank Mary Labby and Mary Phillips for their, uh, service in the Sanford School Department.
And staff appointments? I see none. Um, staff transfers?
Yep, these are our custodians, uh, who will be heading back to MCS. We'll be reopening that, so we wanted to make that official, that, uh, Steve Brown will be the head custodian, heading back to Margaret Chase Smith School, and so will, um, John Murphy and Jane, uh, Sopranzki, um, going back there. And then we're also going to be moving, uh, Ed Tech, Barbara Dumont, from Sanford, uh, Middle School, uh, position to an Ed, from an Ed Tech two to an Ed Tech three position, uh, to replace an opening leader.
Okay. And staff nominations?
Yeah, we have two teachers that we, uh, hired, uh, for that. Uh, once again, I'm really pleased with the hiring that we've been able to do as a district, uh, especially as we get into, uh, August here. Um, so we were able to get someone from the ETEP program, Sarah Neal, as a grade three teacher, Carl J. Lamb, uh, for that position. And then also, um, we're able to get a science teacher, uh, has a lot of experience, also helping with, um, our national parks and helping out there. So I, uh, really enjoyed meeting her and looking forward to, uh, what she can bring to the school department, Genevieve Charpulink, uh, for a science teacher at the high school.
Great. And for policies, I see none. Um, idols for future agenda? None at this time?
We, we do have some policies and things that we are planning to bring up to, at the, uh, meeting. If, last meet, it was the wishes of the board to schedule a meeting, potential meeting next Monday again for the 24th. Um, so that's something that we do have in the plan is to be able to bring forward, um, some policies, um, before the start.
And so the next thing is calendar announcements. As you just said, we're going to have another meeting, um, next Monday night, the 24th at 6:00 PM. Um, and then the meetings after that that are currently scheduled would be Monday, September 14th at 6:00 PM, Monday, September 21st at 6:00 PM.
And that's just because, as you know, Labor Day, Monday, September 17th calls, and we want to have one of the meetings, so that we'll move that back, uh, to be able to do that.
Matt, quick question. Next week's meeting, where are we going to, what format and where are we going to hold it?
I'm not sure yet. We think we'll talk with the chair to basically see, um, how we're going to be able to go through and do, do that. I think one of that is also to continue to do our best, even though we voted this evening, if there are things that come up or, uh, continue the information of things, we want to do our best to be able to communicate that, um, as things go along. So.
So do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? We're adjourned.